On Tuesday, March 23rd, 2021, at 6:30 PM via Zoom. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Sue Lovering and Alderman Jettie will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As President of the Board of Aldermen, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-4, this body, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. To access Zoom, please refer to the agenda of the city's website for the meeting link. To join by phone, dial 1-929-205-6099. The meeting ID is 898-8851-4603. The passcode is 347-707. The public may also view the meeting via Channel 16. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting through public postings. Instructions have also been provided on the City of Nashville's website at nashuanh.gov and publicly noticed at City Hall and the Nashville Public Library. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting via phone or Channel 16, please call 603-821-2049 and they will help you connect. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, he's also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. City Clerk, will the City Clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
I'm present. I can hear the proceedings and I'm home alone.
Alderman Cleve.
I am home alone. I can hear the proceedings. And I'm present.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I'm here. I'm alone and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Dow.
Yes, I'm present. I can hear the proceedings and I am here alone.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, I'm here. I can hear everything and I am alone.
Alderman Clemmons.
I am here. I can hear everyone and I'm by myself.
Alderman Lopez.
Alderman Tanza.
I am present. I'm alone and I can hear everyone.
Alderwoman Lou.
I'm here alone and I can hear you.
Alderman Jettie.
I'm here alone and I can hear the proceedings.
Alderman Schmidt.
I am here alone and can hear everyone.
Alderman Lawrence.
I'm here. I'm alone and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Cleaver.
Alderman Harriet Catherine.
I am present. I'm in this room alone and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Wilshire.
I'm here. I'm alone and I'm being drowned out by sirens in the background. So I don't know what that's all about, but, and I can hear everyone. Thank you.
You have 13 in attendance.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Also with us this evening is Mayor Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. And we also have Fire Chief Brian Rhodes in attendance. Tonight, we have a presentation on the Master Plan Study for National Fire Rescue. And I would like to recognize Fire Chief Brian Rhodes on the Master Plan Study for National Fire Rescue. Chief.
Good evening. Thanks. Thank you to all of you for taking this extra time tonight to hear the final results of this Master Plan Study. So I'd be remiss if I didn't thank you again for your support, the Board and the Mayor, that allowed us to proceed with this master plan. It's a pretty comprehensive document that takes a couple readings to just start to understand. But I think we're very happy with the process. It took a little longer than we wanted to due to COVID. Full disclosure, when the presenters come on, they're the two principals who conducted this study. When we first talked, they asked, is there anything in particular you're looking for? And we said, no. We want you to come in and I want you to tell us what's good, what's bad, and what's ugly with us, because that's the only way we're going to get better. So in this report, I think there are some, there's some good things. There's some things we can do better. And there's some things that we need help with. So without further ado, I think what I'll do is I'll turn this over to Stuart McCutcheon and Mary Ellen Harper from ESCI. Let them present to you. And if you have any questions, when this is over, I'd be glad to answer them.
All right. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. Hey, thank you so much. My name's Stuart McCutcheon and I have with me Mary Ellen Harper. And we are here to present the final findings and a presentation of the master plan. So in this presentation, I'm going to spend some time in the beginning covering some of the department performance and identifying a few trends. So then when we get to the recommendations, we have some of that little bit of background to hopefully answer some questions that otherwise would be difficult to know without seeing some of that data on the front end. So with that, let me get my screen shared. Overcome technology real quick. Sure, it's great. All right. And so, yeah, so Mary Ellen and I work for ESCI. I'm the Director of Business Intelligence. She's the Director of Operations, just a little bit on ESCI. Been in business for over 40 years with a consulting arm of the International Association of Fire Chiefs. In addition to master plans, we do community risk assessments, executive searches, hiring and testing, ISO benchmarking studies, which was included as a separate piece of our contract with you all. And Chief Rhodes has that. And really what we were here to do is to provide a data-driven approach. And so that when we find gaps or issues that need to be addressed, we can provide you all, the elected officials, with some, you know, two or three of the most feasible options, the data behind that to back it up and support it, and then allow you all to make the best decision for your community. So here is me, Director of Business Intelligence. Prior to working for ESCI, I was the chief at Haynes City Fire, which interesting point of fact, I found out later that Brian, or Chief Rhodes' mother lives in Haynes City as well. I was also the chief at Alfordale and City of Dadhamport in central Florida. And the next, I'll turn it over to Mary Ellen quickly so she can introduce herself.
Hi, my name is Mary Ellen Harper. I am the Director of Operations for ESCI. Prior to coming to ESCI, I spent 20 years in Connecticut as the Director of Fire Rescue Services for the Town of Farmington Fire Department. I've also done some teaching for the Naget Fire Academy, University of New Haven, Florida State Fire College. And my interesting point of interest is that my sister actually lives in Nashville and she's been there for about five years and she's a teacher of the next town over. So it was really nice to be able to come back and work in the community where my own sister lives.
So just a little background, December 13th, 2019, we were contracted to do a long-range master plan for Nashville. As Chief Rhodes mentioned, we had a few month hiatus there in the middle trying to figure out how to get the process back up and going again. But the main purpose for this was to evaluate the current operational service delivery, identify future service delivery needs, and then to provide some recommendations for improving service delivery. So this is just a quick snapshot of the call volume year to year from 2014 to 2019. If you look at the EMS, you'll see a spike there in the middle. And that was due to the way that burn permits were being issued. And also running additional calls that were not emergency in nature. And after some, you know, after a couple of years of trying that, the department decided to go back to the way they were originally doing it and had returned that call volume back. But overall, call volume is gradually increasing year over year. About 60% of what the fire department does are emergency medical service responses. And then the, you see on the other side, we have fire at about 2%, false alarms, good intent service calls. Those are all non-emergency calls. So the fire department, in addition to a lot of EMS, they also do a lot of, respond to a lot of incidents that are not emergency calls, but there's still responses that they have to go to. This is a quick map just showing you where incidents occur. And so we took the incident locations and you're seeing a scale. So dark green, there was only one call within that 10-acre hexagon. Red, there are more than 250 calls. So you can see that in the downtown area is where the majority of your calls occur. But in addition to that, at the bottom right, to the east of Station 3, there's quite a bit of call activity on the other side of the interstate, as well as on the north side of the airport, there are pockets there where incident activity is greater than the surrounding areas. This is a hotspot map. This is just, it's a different way of looking at the same information. And it's showing that, you know, the majority of our call concentration is happening downtown in between Stations 1, 2, and 4. And so this is what you would want to see, that your stations are centered around where your activity is located. So that way you can get your firefighters to the scene. This is an estimated four to eight-minute travel time. NFPA 1710 is the industry standard for career fire department performance. And so this is measuring how Nashville, or the model of how Nashville compares to that. So as you can see, it's about 50, maybe not quite 50% yellow. And then the red, it's green. There are a few areas within the city of Nashville where travel times would be in excess of eight minutes. But they're either at the northwest or the southwest portions of the city. This is part of ISO, the Insurance Services Organization. This is a different way to measure the same thing. But this is grabbing road miles within one and a half miles of your fire stations and comparing that to the overall road base. And so with your current deployment, you're at about 50% coverage and they're trying to estimate that same four-minute travel time. This is an overview of your effective response force. So, you know, a lot of times when fires, we might probably only need one engine or maybe two engines to pump water. The rest of it, we need people. We need, you know, for a normal fire, between around 17 to 18, to be able to conduct all the different tasking operations that are going on simultaneously. And so in this, your dark colored areas are areas where you're getting, between 20 and into 30 firefighters to the scene, your very light areas, you're getting four to seven there within an eight-minute response. And so while, you know, it's better to be able to get someone there than not at all. Excuse me, there are some areas, particularly in the southwest part of the city, where coverage is pretty light as far as the number of firefighters you can get there. Lastly, I'm going to cover some of the department performance. And this is again benchmarked against NFPA 1710. In New Hampshire, if when you call 911, all the calls go to the state's processing point to be then disseminated back to the cities. And so what I'm going to show you as we start going through the data is the impact that that has on your performance. So this is the New Hampshire Emergency Communications Center. This is how long it takes them to process calls. The industry standard is 60 seconds for fire and EMS processing. And overall, at the state, they're at 3 minutes and 11 seconds at the 90th percentile. And so the reason we're using percentiles and not averages, averages are subject to outliers and can really sway one direction or another with a few outliers. The fractile performances, we're lining it up from the smallest to the largest times and then taking 90% of that. So they will perform at 3 minutes and 11 seconds for 90% of the calls and better. And then the other 10% is going to be in excess of 3 minutes and 11 seconds. Nashville, once they receive the call, is processing the calls within one minute and three seconds overall. And so NFPA 1710 calls for 60 seconds, 1221, which is the one that's referenced from that, is 64 seconds. So really, once the city gets this information, they're doing an outstanding job. But we've got to keep in mind that for the caller who's experiencing this, probably about four minutes is the last before that first unit's ever notified. Here's our total call processing time, 3 minutes and 32 seconds from the time it goes to New Hampshire till the time that Nashville is able to dispatch it. And then the next metric we're looking at is turnout times. This is we've received a notification and how long does it take for the firefighters to get into the unit and begin to actually respond? So the standard is 60 seconds for EMS, 80 seconds for fire and special operations. So as soon as a 13 second, there is some good improvement that could be done. You know, anecdotally, if we travel across the country, the fastest departments we see are at about a minute and a half. So really, at 213, it's not that bad. But it could be improved upon and it's not just the firefighters being slow getting to the vehicles. Things like station design, the way apparatus or staff, and a couple of other factors can affect these turnout times. Next is travel time. So this is from the time they get in the apparatus and begin responding to they get on scene. Overall, it's 4 minutes and 48 seconds. The standard calls for four minutes. So, I mean, overall, this is really very good performance, you know, among the best we see. So, you know, I think it's something that this is a difficult metric to improve upon because you can, you know, you can only get there just so fast. But what it does show is that your current deployment model is doing a pretty good job of meeting your demand. If in the future we begin to see this leg out and there's five-minute travel times or six minutes, that would be something to begin to keep track of because what that's telling you is, is there's probably not enough units in service to service those calls or that the place where they're occurring, there's not a station close enough to service that demand. Here is a graphic of showing what your response times, or I'm sorry, your travel times look like overall, just for a visual. So most of your incident demand is happening downtown. And downtown, you have very good travel time coverage. Where we're seeing problems is between Stations 3 and 4, down in the southeast, and then north above the airport, and then along the western border towards the south, where travel times are beginning to get, beginning to leg out. Mostly because due to the location of the stations and the amount of travel they're doing to get there. Here's response time performance. I'll quickly breeze through a couple of this. This is turnout and travel. And so at, you know, 6 minutes, 47 seconds, again, that's really pretty good performance. Total response time. So this is just for Nashville. So when you call 911, 90% of the time or better, Nashville units going to arrive in 7 minutes and 15 seconds from the time that the Nashville Dispatch Center receives the call. When you factor in the state PSAT, now we're at 9 minutes and 45 seconds. And so for folks to be, for folks to wait, you know, 10 minutes or more for the first unit to arrive, it shouldn't be a surprise because we're picking up, you know, around three minutes just before Nashville ever has the opportunity to do anything with, call it again with. And so with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Mary Ellen that she, so she can present the summary of the planned findings and cover the rest of the report. Mary Ellen?
Thank you, Stuart. Good evening. I'm going to try to move through this, you know, it's a 175-page master plan. I want to be respectful of your time. I'm going to hit the major points, but certainly be happy to take any questions about anything in the report when we're done. You know, the first thing I would like to say is that it was absolutely a pleasure to work with Nashville Fire Rescue. You know, we do these projects all over the country. And the level of engagement and the people that had thoughtful questions and were just willing to be part of a process for betterment of the system, you guys are second to none. You really have a good group of people that are doing good work. And, you know, we would be remiss if we didn't mention that. You know, at the end of the day, Nashville is a very proud and very traditional New England fire department. Operationally, you're meeting most of the standards for the provision of fire rescue services. But as Stuart said a little while ago, that's right here and right now and today. You're going to need to monitor that going forward. You're a growing community. The demand for services is changing. The places people live and the kind of services they need is changing. You're going to need to monitor that going forward to make sure that what you have is still adequate because all indications are that at some point in the not-too-distant future, you're going to need to add additional resources in the system just to maintain the service that you're getting right now. That said, right now, here and today, there are quite a few administrative and support functions that are woefully understaffed and we're going to spend a little time just showing you what those areas are and where there's absolutely room for improvement. And the other thing I'd like to get on your radar is that the facilities for the fire department are absolutely going to require a financial investment in the very near future. And we will talk about those as well. So the first thing we want to talk about is community risk reduction. Community risk reduction, which includes fire prevention, but it's above and beyond fire prevention. It's not just fires. It's medical calls. It's other types of emergencies. It's really the most vital non-emergency function of the fire service. And the reason for that is that the safest emergency is the one that's prevented. So if we can do anything as a community to help our residents not to get hurt, not to get injured, not to have property damage, that's what we owe them. We owe them the opportunity to try to prevent those damages before they happen. And we can do that in five major ways. Emergency response, obviously, is one of them. When something happens, we respond and try to fix it. But on the front end, there's plenty of opportunities with educating the public, how to not get themselves in trouble, how to not cause problems. Engineering, things that we can do to build buildings safer so that when things do happen, they're not as catastrophic. And then code enforcement and economic incentives. You know, you can always lead somebody with economic incentives and having codes and building procedures are absolutely a way that you're going to want to enforce things to keep them going. So with that in mind, you know, we looked at the Nashville Fire Marshal Division. They are primarily charged with the managing of this. And, you know, quite honestly, this division is challenged in many different ways. They have coverage gaps within the amount of staffing they have and the hours they can cover. They have a lack of ability to perform inspections just because they don't have the staff that you're required to deal with the workload that's on their plate. Staffing in general is a challenge. It's a division where people promote in and then promote out. Workload, because, you know, you're a vibrant city. You're growing and moving forward and things are happening, which is a wonderful thing. But for every building that comes in, there's planner reviews and inspections that happen for this division. So all of this good work that's happening is creating additional work for this already overburdened area. And then obviously, funding is a challenge. You know, they need additional staff, but that comes with a price. So at the present time, the Fire Marshal Division here in Nashville is staffed by an administrator, a fire marshal, and two inspectors. So there's somebody giving administrative support. The fire marshal's in charge and there's two inspectors who are helping to do investigations. During the year 2019, they did 3,170 inspections and/or investigative activities. And what this means is that the fire marshal and the two inspectors conducted an average of more than 1,000 activities each. About five per workday. If you consider, you know, an 80-hour workday for the normal person, everything they do requires significant documentation. So they're not only out there inspecting, they have to come back and write reports and look at codes and look things up. They're really working at a very fast pace to try to get as much done as they're actually getting done. In addition to all of that, planner reviews are required for all fire protection systems, new construction that's required by the New Hampshire State Code. And in 2019, there were an additional 1,208 of those that had to happen on top of all of the other work that was in that office. So what does that mean? What that means is when we look at your office right now, it's staffed Monday through Friday from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. There's no on-call coverage for after-business hours. So if we're outside of those hours, there's nobody that's assigned or available that can automatically help with those issues. What happens after hours is that they go looking for somebody. And about 50% of the time, they can find somebody that can help with those things after hours. The other 50% of the time, whatever the issue is, complaints, code enforcement, investigations, they're not followed up on until the next day because there's just nobody there to deal with it. So that's a gap in coverage that you should be aware of. And we're looking for places that we can improve. Having the ability to hire people, put them on call, or make them otherwise available would really go a long way to providing more consistent coverage to the community. But with the number of people you have now, they can't work 24/7. They're already overwhelmed. We can't put them in on nights and weekends. We need to find a way to kind of spread that workload out. Beyond that, the current staffing does not allow for regular inspections to be completed at all your target hazards. And target hazards are places where there's a significant life safety issue. There's hazardous materials. There's other things that make that something more dangerous than areas around them. Things like apartment complexes, multifamily dwellings. Ideally, you want to do regular inspections. You want to make sure that those places are safe and that if something were to happen, that we can mitigate that with as little risk to life safety as possible. Nashville just does not have the capacity to do that right now because that office is just not staffed to that ability. Right now, these places are only being inspected if somebody calls and makes a complaint because that's the best they can do. So when we look at community risk production here in Nashville, we have a couple of recommendations. The first one is that you really need a formal community risk production program. And it needs to be reinstituted in tandem with the public educator position that was eliminated back in 2006. You know, there's so many opportunities to help people prevent things from happening. Somebody needs to be assigned to that function. And back in 2006 and before, you had somebody that was charged with that responsibility. But budget constraints made that position go away and that position just never got picked up anywhere else. So right now, there's not an established fire prevention or community risk production program in place. The firefighters do the best they can day to day. If something comes up, they try to deal with it. The fire marshal gets a request for something, they'll do it. But there's not any proactive plan that says, look, these are the risks in Nashville and these are the ways that we're going to try to deal with that. So, you know, as we went through the process, we identified some areas that were just blatant to us that are fantastic opportunities for community risk reduction. The first one is disabilities. When we looked at your population right now, you've got 8,922 of your households, which is about 24%, have one or more members with a disability living in that home. And we understand that people with disabilities have more difficulty getting themselves out of emergency situations and that they're more difficult to protect. So the best thing we can do is on the front end, provide education. Be aware of where they are, find out how we can help and make sure that they're aware of how they can help themselves. So that is a fantastic opportunity to create specific messages and educational programs for disabled people and the people they live with so that they can be the first people to help those people before the fire department arrives. Another one that was really, you know, kind of came out to us is your population has been growing and changing. And it's been doing that for a while, but when we stop and look now where you are, currently in Nashville, 21.7% of your population speaks a language other than English, which is really important to know when you've got a formal program. We know that almost a quarter of your population doesn't speak English. We should be creating messaging opportunities in the languages that they do speak so that they learn these lessons in their native language. And if we're not doing that, we're missing, before we even start this program, almost a quarter of your population. So it's important to be sensitive to what's in the community, who's in the community, what their needs are and how we can meet them in a way that meets their needs. So with that, when we look at industry standards and best practices, NFPA 1730 is what we would look at and that talks about staffing levels for inspectors and fire marshals. And, you know, the present staffing level does not allow for the regular inspections that they recommend. And the only way you're going to be able to do that is to add additional people to that office. I would tell you, you probably, when we look at the numbers, could use three. If we could get one or two in there now, it's going to be a huge step forward, you know, and that's the kind of thing you want to plan for. We all understand that these things require money and that money requires planning, you know. Start small, have one a year, build up to it. Knowing though, that as you're adding people to this process to try to balance it out, your community is still growing. So not only are you going to be adding people, but you may need to add more people to meet that future need that's still coming forward. Beyond that, you know, there may be other ways to look at it, you know, ways such as a civilian plans reviewer, you know, plans review component is a big part of the workload in that office. The problem with line firefighters is they promote in, they promote out. Some stay for a while, some don't want to be there. So there's a level of change that's going on within that area. A civilian plans reviewer, if somebody was hired to come in and just perform that function and not have an opportunity to leave or not promote to the line, might give you the opportunity to create stability. Somebody that was consistently looking at all of the new plans coming in and making sure they were held to the same standard and was there for a number of years to create a significant consistent baseline. So that may be an opportunity where you can remove some of the work from the other fire marshals and inspectors, give somebody else the job of civilian plans reviewer, create some stability in that office and still be able to perform more community risk production and inspection opportunities. So the next big area we wanted to hit on was the facilities with the Nashville Fire Rescue. You have six fire stations, plus you have a fire alarm headquarters building and a training facility with a burn building. And what we did is we came through on this process is we met with the firefighters and spoke with them, but we also visited all of the fire stations and we created a rating system where every building was rated as excellent, good, fair, or poor. Fair and poor, obviously, being the areas you should be aware of. A fair building is one that is structurally sound, but there's some non-structural defects. The interior's got wear and tear. There's some mechanical systems that are working, but probably need some work on them. And the important part here is the building design and construction may not match the building's purposes. So that happens, especially in New England. You've got a lot of buildings that were built many, many years ago. The role of the fire department has changed in the last 100 years. What we do has changed and in many cases, where the people in our communities live has changed. So we may have buildings that were built many years ago that may not be necessarily in the best locations now. So I say that because when we look at these buildings and they're getting older, they're going to have additional needs for maintenance. And the question now becomes, do we repair them or do we look at relocating them? So, you know, a fair building is one of those that you can start looking at. When we get to the poor area, we've already passed the time that we should have taken some action in the areas that we need to address pretty quickly. we've already passed the time that we should have taken some action in the areas that we need to address pretty quickly.
I think you're on mute.
About now.
Now you're good.
You know, when we look at some of these buildings, for instance, the Amherst Street Station, Station One, you know, turnout times, things where we're looking at how quickly a firefighter can get into a fire truck and respond. These buildings were built in a different time, and they weren't necessarily built with that in mind. So newer facilities are specifically designed with ease of access to get the firefighters out to the trucks and out the door quickly to respond. There's ways that we can improve their turnout times by creating environments that are specifically set up for that. So as we're looking at making changes, those are the kind of things we want to keep in mind. So Station One should definitely be on the radar. It's a fair building. It's not in poor condition yet, but fair means you've got to start planning because you're going to be in a poor situation very quickly if you don't plan to address it sooner than later. When we look at your Station Two, it's built in 1998. It's in good condition. It's good for now, but, you know, again, things change and and life happens, and buildings get older as we move forward, and you're going to need to plan, not necessarily imminently, but a little bit further out just to to maintain that building and keep it in good working order. The next one that was a concern was Station Three on Spitbrook Road, which is also in fair condition. The building was built in 1977. It's got semanticated facilities, and there are absolutely areas that need to be addressed sooner than later in that building. Station Four was built in 2005. It's also in good condition, but again, you know, that's already more than 15 years old. So keeping in mind that while it's good today, you're going to need to do work in the near future to keep it in good condition. Looking out at Station Five, that's another one that's in fair condition. It was built in 1961. It's an older building. It's definitely got some facilities and systems that need to be updated and or renovated. And the same goes for Station Six on Connet Road. It's now in fair condition. Fire Alarm Headquarters is good, and your training facility is brand new. It's in absolutely excellent condition. So, you know, when I want to summarize the facilities, the message I'd like to leave you with is that the infrastructure is going to require significant financial investment in the coming years. So we tell you that now so that you can plan and start coming up with a plan that your community can afford and to build into the overall plan for your city. Four of your six fire stations are more than 40 years old. They're in fair condition. They're going to need work. Many of these stations have outlived their useful life. Some are no longer located in the optimal locations. And, you know, if you look through the service delivery part of this report, you're going to see which stations are still in ideal locations and probably need to be renovated, and there's some stations that it might make sense just to rebuild in a different location. So that's part of this planning process is to have those discussions now, see how it fits into your overall capital plan and and to make decisions that will get you to where you need to be when it's time to be there. So with that in mind, you know, as you're looking at these stations and talking about renovations and relocations, some of the things that you really just want to think about building into stations now that may not have been done back when some of the stations were built are things like drive-through bays. You want the ability for firefighters to drive in, forward, and to leave forward. A lot of our accidents happen when you're backing up. So, you know, right now, you have drive-through bays in some of the stations. The problem is you have so many apparatus, they can't drive through because there's things in the way. So even though you have drive-through bays, you're not getting the benefits of it, and you're still requiring people to back up. Backing up is dangerous. Accidents happen, people get hurt. If we can avoid backing up a large fire apparatus, it's always a better idea to do that. Another issue is cancer in the fire service, and, you know, turnout gear goes into fires of firefighters. They're washing it, they're making every effort they can, but at the end of the day, there's still going to be a process of off-gassing following a fire where the gas is coming off of the turnout gear, and now the firefighters in that fire station are exposed to that off gas that happened during a fire long after the fire is over. So, you know, modern practices are to create well-ventilated separate rooms where turnout gear is stored so that as that process happens, those contaminants are removed and the firefighters aren't there breathing it again. So these are all things that you would want to consider as you're making renovations and rebuilding fire stations in the future. And all of that helps, you know, for the safety of your firefighters. So just to kind of summarize the process we went through, you know, we had 22 virtual and in-person interviews, meetings, and facility tours as part of this process. You know, we tried not to do this in a vacuum. The pandemic certainly gave us some challenges, but we wanted to talk to anybody that would talk to us. We wanted to hear what was going on and see how your system was working. Knowing that we couldn't meet with everybody in person or virtually, we also did a 20-question online survey of the Nashville firefighters, members of the community, of the fire service. And the reason for that was we wanted to give them an opportunity to have an anonymous chance to give their input, their thoughts, and to give their ratings. So I will tell you, we had some pretty good responses out of that 20-question online survey for the fire department. 94 members of the department did complete the survey, which is about 54% of your members. So it is considered representative of the majority of the fire department. And what those surveys told us was very much the same as what we heard during all of those meetings with the firefighters in the stations. First and foremost, your firefighters are proud to be members of Nashville Fire Rescue. They're proud to be part of this organization. They're proud of the work that they do. They're proud to serve the city. They are just very proud of the work they do. And I think that's important because there's a level of pride that comes with that that you can't create. It just happens from within, and that's a tribute to you for the resources that the chiefs and the aldermen have provided as far as training and equipment and their ability to do their job well, and they're proud of that. So kudos to all of you for being part of that process. Beyond that, you know, they all felt that the people that make up the department are by far the department's biggest strength. They talked about the number of people, the manpower, the aggressive firefighting, you know, again, they're proud of the service they provide. They're proud of the level of training they have. They do a good job, and they're proud of it. So I think it's important to recognize that because as you go through this process, there's always room for improvement, but you have a lot of good things going and a lot of good people doing that work, and it's really important to give credit where credit is due. And that's absolutely where the good things are happening. That moves us to the next thing, which is morale. You know, far and wide, we heard in all the meetings and the interviews showed us that there is a morale problem in Nashville Fire Rescue. Members felt very strongly that communication or lack thereof was the biggest department issue. People just weren't getting the information they needed. It wasn't consistent, and that makes people uneasy. People want to know what to expect. They want to have a level of expectation of where they fit in the system, and if they don't have that information, they get unsettled, and that leads to bad morale. So there is a morale problem in Nashville Fire Rescue. The good news is absolutely fixable with a little bit of time and resources. We did hear repeatedly throughout all of our meetings, you know, members want to see a more consistent accountability system with a Nashville Fire Rescue. They want to see chief officers holding members accountable from the top down. They also wanted to see their own union holding their members accountable from the bottom up. They felt, by and large, that not everybody was treated the same way in certain circumstances. And part of that is just the communication. There may be circumstances that require different responses. There may be people that are being treated the same, but they don't have that understanding because they don't have the information. So some of that's just creating more transparency process, understanding that not every detail of every situation can be shared, but that there should be a baseline expectation of what can be shared, and people should know what they can understand here, again, knowing where they fall in that system and how they fit in. This is a big issue that came up with training, and and members across the board repeatedly identified that training is truly one of the biggest weaknesses within Nashville Fire Rescue. And we're going to talk about some ways that that can be fixed because it's absolutely fixable. So we gave you, you know, dozens of recommendations, and, you know, the important thing is that while all of those need to be addressed and looked at going forward, you have to look at the morale, the communication, the accountability, and the training before any of the other things come out. We we need to do all of it, but, you know, it's almost like triaging a patient. It doesn't matter if their big toe is broken. If we don't get them breathing, it's not going to matter. So, you know, the focus really initially needs to be on your morale, your communication, your accountability, and your firefighter training. E S C I suggests the most effective way and the immediate way to address all of these issues is really to look at restructuring the administrative division to include an assistant chief of uniform professional standards. And this chief would report to the chief of the department. And and the reasons we recommend this are that they would have the ability to investigate all the internal affairs type activities. So right now, that's additional work on top of the current chief and assistant chiefs, and they've got their plates full. You've got a very lean staff administrative division. They're trying to do a whole multitude of things. And when all of these internal affairs things come in, it's just more work on top of what they're doing, and there's only so many hours in the day. So now they've got to make decisions about what are they going to do and what are they not going to do to get those things done. So if we could create that third position and take all of those internal affairs issues off of their plates, what we're creating is that level of consistency that the members are looking for. We have one point of contact between the fire department and human resources, one person that's addressing it, one person that knows past practice, one person that's making sure that there's a consistent metric that's being applied across the board. This position could also help develop and manage a communications plan. You know, again, people want to know, especially in this day and age, where they fit in the system, what to expect, what's going to happen. And and that's a critical weakness right now. You've got those two people, the chief and the assistant chief. They're trying to just get as much done as they can during the day. You know, they don't have the plan and facility to sit down and have a planned-out communications program where they can go ahead and get that information out to them. What I would tell you is that that issue is going to continue to fester unless we can find a way to deal with it and get that information out to them. The third big issue is the recruitment of new firefighters. You know, right now, training and safety division is spending a significant amount of time recruiting and vetting out new firefighters and getting them online. Honestly, they have bigger issues, and the bigger issue really should be focusing on training your firefighters. We should be getting these trained instructors out there training your firefighters and perhaps reassigning this recruitment duties to this assistant chief, who can then, you know, make sure that that happens, but allow the training division to focus their efforts on training the firefighters, which would address the issue of the training deficiency that was brought up by the membership. And then, again, the training program in general, if we put this assistant chief over that and we take off the workload and the recruitment and retention, now we have somebody that's going to manage the training safety division, help them achieve smart goals that are smart, measurable, reasonable, and able to be done in an appropriate amount of time, and we have accountability there. So the person who's overseeing it was taking some workload off the training division, and now the training division can be focused in on really getting firefighters trained to the level that they need to be. And then the fifth issue is the the professional development program. You know, you've got people moving up through the ranks, but they're taking classes here and there, and there's not a systematic program to move people from where they are now to where they want to get. So if we could create a formal career development program and show people career paths to say, if you want to do this job, these are the programs you need to do. If you want to do that job, this is what you need to do, and give them something to look forward to in the future. You know, people want to see that there's hope and that they're going to move up and that they can promote, and they want to know how to do that and to prepare themselves for it. So, you know, in summary, the communication, the accountability, the training, the morale, those are your big issues. I would tell you that in 2001, Municipal Resources Inc. came in and completed a similar organizational assessment. And at that time, they had the same results. They felt that the morale, the communication, the accountability were issues. So here we are 20 years later, and those issues are still unresolved. And not only are they unresolved, but they're going to get worse if we don't start getting something to address them. And we need to put some resources toward giving you the people that can focus their efforts on dealing with those issues specifically so that they don't continue to fester and get worse. You know, I guess the last thing I would leave you with is, you know, again, there's dozens of recommendations in this master plan. You don't have to like them all. You don't have to do them all, and that's that's designed into the process. The most important thing out of this is to agree that all of this is important, it needs to be looked at, and then to move into the strategic planning process. And that's what comes next, ideally, in a good situation. What you want to see now is the strategic planning process is going to be your one to three-year plan. The master plan was your 15-year look ahead. Now, we've looked at all the issues that we could see on the horizon for 15 years, but ideally, you would want to engage in strategic planning next, and that's bringing in the Nashville stakeholders for all different levels of your organization, say, okay, out of all these recommendations, what are our priorities here in Nashville? What do we want to do, and what do we want to do first? And we want to see everybody from elected officials, to chief officers, to new firefighters, to get all of you in on the same page and say, okay, this is what we're going to do in the first year or the first three years, and to do that. And I would tell you that, you know, if you don't engage in that strategic planning process and you don't make a plan of how you're going to start addressing things, what often happens is these master plans become a report on a shelf, and that's absolutely not what you want to do. You had a lot of people that were engaged in this process and gave their opinion, and we're looking to see change happen. And the best way to do that is to bring them back and to do the strategic planning process and figure out where do you in agency want to start and what are you going to do. So in conclusion, you know, the strategic planning process will get you an ability to systematically implement the recommendations that are in this report in a way that's good for you and your stakeholders. And with that, I'd open the floor for any questions.
Thank you, Mary Ellen. Does anyone on the board have questions? I don't see any hands up. Anyone? I don't see any. Oh, I do. Alderman Lou. Alderman Lou.
Thank you. Ms. McCutcheon, how did you learn to talk so fast? No, it was great. Thank you. That was really incredible. It all made sense, so thank you for getting so much information out in such a short period of time.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for that report. Obviously, it's, you know, you just, you know, as fast as you talked, you covered a lot. But, you know, it's it's up to us to all go and look at this report and study it. You know, I I tried to read through it before tonight, but I'm looking forward to going back and looking at it in more detail. But while you're here, one of the things that that struck me was that chart that where you showed. I I don't know if I have the number correctly. It was a small number. Was it 2% of calls of all calls are are related to fire? You know, is that is that typical of fire departments? You know, is there something, you know, should, you know, is that typical? Is that where we, you know, is that what we should be expecting? Or, you know, should should we look at, you know, a lot of those calls are emergency medical calls? You know, we do have a an ambulance service that we're contracted with. You know, do other departments handle those medical calls like we do? Or or do they contract out the the medical part and and concentrate on the more emergency, you know, the fire calls and and those types of things?
Yes, those are a good question. Those are good questions, and so the answer is typically if you are a department that runs EMS, that your call volume for fire-related calls is going to be somewhere in around 3%. And so whether we're looking at Florida, New Hampshire, New York, Colorado, they're all about the same. The reason for that is the introduction of fire codes. And with the introduction of fire codes, the buildings that we're building and renovating are much less likely to have a fire to begin with, and there's suppression and much better suppression detection capabilities as well. So the numbers of fires we have are are less. With that being said, the only way to get that accomplished is with is through strong fire prevention. And so that, but for Nashville, that's one of the areas where you're really struggling because, you know, your prevention folks are are really overwhelmed now. As far as the EMS, the reason for fire departments responding to EMS calls is because typically they're going to be within an area, and they can get there faster, and they can provide that first responder care to someone to help stabilize them for when the ambulance gets there. So I would be a proponent of continuing to maintain EMS response to emergencies. Back on that, one of the first lines we showed where there was a spike in EMS and it went back down, that's where the department expanded the EMS calls they were going to, but then reined it back in because it was just getting to be a little bit much for what they had going. But in departments that run no EMS, you're still probably only looking at around 12%, you give or take a little bit. And that's simply because with that EMS gone, all your other components get, you know, more representative. But the number of the fires is just simply not what they were 10, 15, 30 years ago. Did that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you. Thank you very much.
No problem.
Anyone else have any questions for either Mr. McCutcheon or Ms. Harper? Alderman Clay.
Thank you, Madam President. I guess my my question, you probably don't even have these numbers, but you mentioned about that the fire, the fire marshal and so on, that only 50% of those that happen after hours, we can reach someone to get out there immediately. And that, obviously, the other 50%, we have to wait till at least the the next day or maybe the next business day because you said it was a Monday through Friday type of thing. Do we have numbers to that, those percentages? So how many of those incidents of the fire marshal, we need to get someone out there, doesn't happen for a couple of days?
We absolutely do. The 50% number came from the Nashville Fire Marshal Division, and they have a spreadsheet that showed exactly how many calls came in, how many people responded, and which calls had to hold over, so that that number is readily available from the Fire Marshal's Division. I don't have it here with me right now, though. I'm sorry.
From the Fire Marshal's Division, okay.
Yes.
That's okay. The the reason that I I had asked is, I guess my question would be, as far as being able to do a proper investigation, I guess we we would say, you would probably want to have that happen as soon as possible. And to delay it by a day or a couple of days, if it's a weekend thing, could contaminate and hurt the the process. Is that correct?
You are absolutely correct, and the chain of evidence is a concern as well. You know, you want things to be left intact, to remain the way they were. And, you know, to your point, every day or two is going to lessen that, and now we're losing our ability to accurately identify what caused the issue and and to get the correct answers out of that situation.
Thank you.
You all set, Alderman Cleveland? Alderman Lopez?
Yes, yes, I am.
Thank you.
Just two questions, I guess. First, in relation to other fire departments, because this kept coming up when we were talking about the union contracts. How did you find our compensation level? And then in looking at potentially getting additional inspectors. What are your recommendations regarding having other agencies or other departments of the city cross-trained to support fire departments in, in doing inspections?
So, you know, it wasn't specifically a staffing study, but as we walked through the process, I would tell you that. We did not get widespread complaints about the compensation level. You know, there were concerns at the time we were there because the contracts had not been ratified. But, you know, I think there was an overwhelming feeling that, you know, due contractual bargaining that they were pretty satisfied with the benefits. So I didn't see that as being an issue that we see in many of the places that we go. And when it comes to cross-training, you know, there's absolutely an opportunity to do that and to take out of the box, but you need to be able to manage that, you know. There's no value in having people do these inspections if you're not bringing them back into the main system, managing them, making sure the correct data is getting into the right place and that it's being used widespread. So. If you had the resources, you added somebody into the office to could oversee that program and make sure it was being done accurately and consistently, it would absolutely be one way that you could fix that situation.
Chief, did you want to weigh in?
Yes, thank you. So to Alderman Cleveland's point, um, there, there's a lot of these things that by state R S A that we must investigate Fire Marshal's Office. We must investigate deaths. We must investigate serious injury. We must investigate. Carbon monoxide calls. So to, to, to also do, if I may, to answer part of Alderman Jenny's question. That the EMS calls, those also encompass motor vehicle accidents, which we probably have. Five to 10 of those a day that we go to. Nashville is a very busy city. Carbon monoxide calls are, are in there under hazardous conditions. So there are probably. Oh, my goodness. 50 different codes we could use in the National Fire Reporting Incident, National, National Fire Incident Reporting System. But they were broken down into ESCI's chart into more broader terms. The whole thing about response time is, so 20 years ago, you had 17 minutes to get out of a building. Today, it's fact, you have about three minutes to get out of a building. Uh, and is witnessed by those, those poor individuals last night in New York at that senior living facility. That is something we don't want to have. We live in New England. We have a lot of old buildings. Yes, we have a lot of retrofitted buildings. But when you look at all of the new construction they're putting up in our community now. It is lightweight wood construction. We are not building the robust. Ordinary construction, which is block and concrete walls. We're not building timber frame buildings, which are our mill buildings along the riverfront. That have been converted to housing units. So it's, it's looking at that 2% number. That, that's. It takes a lot deeper dives. There's, there's a lot more variables that come into play for that. So.
Thank you. Alderman Cleveland.
Thank you. I appreciate it. So my, um, my question is related to, I guess, response time as well. And I noticed that you kind of during the presentation kind of danced around the issue of whether or not we need a new fire station or not. And I guess my question would be. Did, does your report say anywhere where, where in the future we might need an additional? Fire station? Or do you think that with the? Or would you recommend rather that we relocate? Um, a couple of them to a more strategic location and that six stations could be. Good for the next, I don't know, 20, 30 years, let's say.
Yeah, that's another good question. We did, we did address that. And so what I'll tell you is right now, the coverage is sufficient to provide the demand that you have. However, over time, as you're, you know, begin to develop more along the riverfront, get bigger subdivisions or multi-level buildings there. North of the airport or out in the Southwest, that there could be a need. Uh, we did an optimization. Your stations are pretty well cited today. So probably anything that, uh, you know, relocations would be additional stations. But what I would tell you is that. That station location optimization is only one piece of the puzzle. And so you, you need land and you need it being zoned in the right way and, uh, you know, grade and highway access and all that stuff. So. There's several other factors. So what I would suggest is when you reach a point where you can see your performance beginning to deteriorate. Uh, or there's just an area that you simply can't service to the same level as the rest of the community. So at that point, evaluate those factors and any other factors you think are important and make the best decision with the data that you have at the time. Does that answer your question?
It does. It does. I guess like you, you don't think we're at that point yet where we, we, we should be planning ahead for that or? You know, based on where we know the growth of the city is going to go or, or, or things like that? Or is that something that should purely be data driven?
Well, I think being data driven helps take a lot of the emotion out of the argument, uh, because the data is what the data is. But at the same time, you know, you get, you've got travel times, uh, overall that are just slightly above industry standards and the goal for industry standard. Your turnout performance, I think, is as much as anything affected by building design. And your stations absolutely need a whole lot of TLC. And so before it, it just, for me, if it was my decision before, I invested two to $3 million into a station. I'd want to make very certain that that configuration was going to meet my need, that it was in the right location for the, for given for what we have our demand today. And that when we invest that money, we're going to see a payoff on the back end for, for that investment.
I, I appreciate that answer. Thank you.
Alderman Cleveland.
Thank you. So Mike, I was surprised. I was like, oh, my next. My question was around the percentage of people in our, um, community who are either disabled or speak another language. And I just thought that was sort of striking. And I was wondering if that's a typical number or if that's fairly high.
It's actually indicative of what I've seen in a number of the communities that we've done in the recent months, you know, about 25% give or take. You're on the higher side of that. But I think, you know, to us, what the bigger issue was the fact that you had such a significant population of people that don't speak English. But I didn't see any evidence of programming to address that. You know, we go to a lot of communities that have that kind of numbers. But they've got multi-language community risk reduction programs. They've got people that are on the fire department that speak those languages that are going out into those areas. And I think that's really the disconnect in, in Nashua is that, you know, the population's changed. You've got these people that don't speak the language and you're not meeting them in their native tongue.
If I could follow up?
Yes.
So I know there's a, a large report to dive into and maybe you answered it in there, but. What does a multi-language program look like? Is that a, you know, having a person who's a translator? Is it more translating documents? Like, what does that look like?
It could be all of those, you know, if you dig into the risks and look at it, you know, we've seen communities that hire multilingual people to work in the office. It may be a matter of having somebody in your office work with somebody on the outside that can translate, you know, fire prevention materials into other languages and disseminate those. In a way specific to areas that you know that they're going to be better received in a language other than English. So, you know, it doesn't have to be any one size fits all. It could be a combination of all of those. Videos are another great way to teach people lessons, you know, again, delivering them in their first language is always an easier lesson for them to learn than trying to translate it into a language that they don't predominantly speak.
Thank you. I really appreciate that.
Thank you, Alderman. Here again, right, the afternoon.
My question was on the, uh, the staff and, and you called the, the relief factor. I just wanted to make sure you were speaking that they would need like 20 full-time employees. Was that correct?
Yes, I, I lost you just a sec, a little bit on the front. And so I just want to make sure I have the question correct. So you're asking about the 1.25 relief factor and are those numbers correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. So there's, there's two ways to approach your staffing because people are going to take vacation time. They're going to call out sick. And they're going to get hurt at some point and, and be out of injury leave. So one option would be is that. We use overtime to fill all of those positions. And, and that's pretty much what you're doing now. The other option to that is, is that you calculate how much are you spending in overtime? And then you compare that to how much it would cost with salary and fringe benefit of hiring enough folks to cover what's your calculated. Daily absentee rate is. And so, uh, 25% is, is kind of in the middle. You know, there's departments that are closer to maybe 20%. And to be honest with you, there's a lot of departments that are closer to 50%. But what that does is it provides enough folks out there in the field that you're not constantly hiring overtime or pulling people across districts and things of that nature. There's, there's already the people there in place. But then additionally, that frees up. Folks for things like, uh, better training, more concentration on those items because there's just, there's a few more people in the system. Neither way is necessarily right or wrong, but there are two different approaches to solve the same problem.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Alderman Dow.
Yes, just real quickly, Chief Rhodes, uh. The city does have two pieces of land earmarked for, for fire stations in the city. And the one issue we have without on Amherst Street with a lot of commercial buildings is. The fire station that addresses that is the airport fire station. Correct me if I'm wrong. And if for any reason there was an accident on Amherst Street or Sharon Avenue, or there was a train across the tracks. You can't respond. You'd have to wait for the, the station from Amherst Street to get up there, which would be a delay. But. In the, in the future, we do have a parcel of land on. Up in, in the. What was it?
Porton Road.
Porton Road. Thank you. And, and, uh, which could be earmarked for at least a single. Engine truck or initially that could respond immediately. But I just thought you might want to address that.
Yes, thank you, Alderman Dow. So when you look at the, uh, the data. And just a point of clarification for all of you, all of the data that. Stuart and Mary Ellen are speaking of was from our fire dispatch and from our city G I S Esri. So that is all 100% Nashua data. That is not, that was not made up. So you bring up the airport fire station. You know, back in the day, I, I don't know, I wasn't around that long. Um, I haven't been around that long, but you know. Urban legend tells me they put the fire station there because they didn't know which road was going to build up, Amherst Street or Broad Street. So you put it in the middle. Well, lo and behold, Amherst Street builds up. And now that fire station is kind of on an island. As, as you alluded to, Alderman Dow, yes, the station who backs them up is the Amherst Street Station, which also covers. The north end of the city and in that section of the city where they showed, uh, the, uh, the, the population density is. Um, so that creates response time lags to get out there. The other, the other part, and, and all this data is in, is in this report. You can see the travel times. Uh, the southwest part of the city is in the same boat. Right now, it is, it's covered by Engine Six at the Corner Road Station. But if Engine Six is busy, the next vehicle to come is from the Lake Street Fire Station or the Spitbrook Road Fire Station. So now we're getting into those protracted response times of eight to 10 minutes to get out there. A- as Stuart, you know, alluded to, this is all data driven. Um, and, and they're throwing ideas out there for us. But one of the things, you know, we, we've been talking about for a while is, you know, what do we do with the airport fire station and where could we put that? Because we can't just move that airport fire station, although I know it's your ward, we can't move it out there to Ward Two. And then leave everybody on, on Ward One without fire protection and EMS coverage. So that's kind of the, the dilemma we're in. But I think the data that is in this report bears out a lot of. A, a lot of answers for us, um, going forward.
All set.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, and Chief Rhodes, I'm glad, uh, you mentioned, uh, the apparatus is this location. Uh. There is one thing I didn't see in the report is the amount of time it takes to Calvary to get there to rescue the first new engine company and particularly, uh, a lot of the areas. When I used to work, that was one of my fears. Like I used to tell the guys, it could take eight minutes for the Calvary to arrive in some of our location. But my question to Stuart and Mary Ellen, Mary Ellen mentioned it. You know, start looking at stations, rehabbing stations and everything else and consider relocation. And I found that interesting because it seems to be the, by the city's master plan, we're increasing the density to downtown. And what I mean by the downtown, the companies that traditionally protect that area are stations one, two, and four. And so therefore with the call volume as what you showed on the hot map. Basically, it's got to exist for a very long time. Uh, we have built Lot 34. We have taken many other old existing mills and turned them into apartments. We have new developments down on Harbor Ave, uh, also down by the riverside and is yet to be more to come. An additional thing on, uh, buildings on Sanders Street. So basically those downtown companies. Uh, well, my, my thing is, I would like you to address the needs within the density and those companies may not be able to be relocated.
So I think I understand your question. So, uh, the effective response force map is where we took and it's basically the best case scenario. Everybody's in quarters. Everybody's available and we're using Esri's historic road-based network to calculate how far we think they can get within eight minutes. And then overlaying all those people on top of each other. So then along with that, we look at our call concurrency rates, which are how often are single calls, two calls, three calls or more happening at the same time? Because that's all taking away from that best case scenario E R F. And then the final piece would be the unit hour utilization. As units exceed 10% utilization rates, that means if we're measuring, you know, 90% of the time, look, 10% of the time they're not there. There's very little margin for error and mistakes in other areas. Company is going to be out of place while they come in. And so I think, you know, what, the way you use that is you look and say, you know, where we're, we're building these, you know, significant structures. What is our E R F in that area best case scenario? And, uh, let's say it's margin, it's, you know, on the boundary line of being sufficient. The next thing I would look at is our call concurrency rate, how often are multiple calls occurring? They're pulling multiple units in. And then what's the unit hour utilization rate? And let that help to dictate to me, do, are we going to be able to field sufficient numbers of firefighters? I think this time, like I said earlier, I think right now you're okay. But maybe two or three years from now you won't be. And so it's something that, you know, we just want to have it on your radar to, to monitor and keep track of, uh, as growth and development continues to occur.
Very good. Thank him. Thank him, Madam President.
You're welcome. I'd like to see Alderman Schmidt.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, and thank you very much for keeping number five in Ward One. Uh, we rely on them quite a bit and we're very grateful that they're there. Um, I, I only wanted to know if you feel that there was anything. That would have changed your report if it hadn't been done in the year of COVID.
I don't think so. Um, it, it slowed it, it mostly slowed it down because between May through, or I'm sorry, March through, um. Yeah, June, basically. It was, it was last time we were in the, at the point where we were ready to start rocking and rolling and then just everything stopped. So that slowed it down some, but otherwise I think it's pretty much there. You know, the problems with the communication. I think you can't help but see when you spend time in those offices, there's only just so much any one or two people can do. And, you know, when you're overwhelmed, it's hard to be proactive and communicating. Uh, same goes for the Fire Prevention Division. I think operationally, uh, you're pretty. I think operationally, uh, you're pretty good today. But those major issues were identified 20 years ago. And since that time, administration and fire prevention has gotten leaner while their workload has continued to increase. And so I think, you know, just, if you just do a comparison between the two, the, the end results are very similar. Um, I think, you know, now it's just as Mary Ellen mentioned earlier, is doing a strategic plan identifying, you know, what can we do? Are there some areas where may possibly we could supplement, uh, with existing staff from other departments? Or is there another way that we could do this to make it as cost effective as possible? But at the same time recognizing that if you don't do anything about the problem, it's not going to get the better.
Thank you. This is a tremendous, tremendous tool for us to use going forward. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Alderman Lopez.
I guess that the one good thing about 2020 was that we all use virtual offices a lot more. Sometimes it can seem like we're all in the same, uh, virtual office. So are there opportunities there to maybe increase the availability for on-call staff in a different way than having them, um, onsite at a fire station? Or is it better to have somebody manning the fire station, um, and providing additional staffing capacity? More for those administrative calls that you were talking about.
You, you, you're a CBA, it's going to dictate a lot of that stuff. And so for example, with fire prevention, folks come in because it's the first open position and they roll out as soon as they get the opportunity, they want to be back in operations. And so that creates a bit of a vacuum in your prevention because there's just, there's not that consistency there. Where if you had a, say a civilian plans review, where they wouldn't necessarily be subject to that CBA and those processes. And you, it probably would be, would be a more cost effective option. You know, without me diving too deep into violating Brian's, uh, CBA with the union. But, uh, you know, I think that's the thing to do is we've, we've identified the issues. We've provided a couple of different ideas of ways to correct it, but then looking, uh, based on the revenue you have available, the highest priority for you and then what's the most cost effective option to get the job done? And I think those are the decisions that need to be made at this point.
All set, Alderman Lopez. Alderman Clay.
Madam President, I think, um, Chief Rhodes had a comment first. I saw his hand go up, but then I'd like to ask a question.
Chief Rhodes?
Thank you. I'll be brief. So I, I have a saying that I like to use at work and that saying is very simple. We're only as good and we can only provide the services with the people we have on duty. Our city is not conducive to having volunteers. It's not conducive to have people, uh, at home working remotely. Through this entire pandemic, I am very proud of our organization because every single person came to work every day. We, we did not have the ability to work remotely. The city is just too big, it's too busy and it's continues to grow. So that is, it, it's not, um, it's a great question, Alderman Lopez. And it's, you know, we're, we're always looking at ways to leverage technology. But as far as providing the service to our citizens, um, if, if you're not there and working, we cannot provide a timely service to you.
Alderman Clay.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Um, actually mine is more of a, a comment than a, um, a, a question. Oh, since I've lived in my home here for the past, um, 17, 18 years, um, my neighborhood has changed and it's gone from being a very elderly neighborhood to young neighborhood, back to kind of getting a little older too. And one of the things that I notice is when the, um, the lights go off in the middle of the night and we hear those, those alarms going off, it, the first person on site is our fire department here. Our National Fire and Rescue, long before even the ambulance gets there. Our, our fire and rescue are in the door, helping whoever that person is. And then I see the ambulance pull up. So, um, kudos to our, our, our fire and rescue and I really appreciate that. And I know that sometimes we look at those times and say, if we could just get there a minute sooner. I agree. If we could get there a minute sooner, but we are getting there even before the ambulances are getting there. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you. I am going to, um, look for a motion. Thank you all. First I want to thank you, Mr. McCutcheon, Ms. Harper, Fire Commissioners, Fires, Fire Department, all of you for this, uh, for this good meeting, uh, interesting, informative. And, um, we'll see what we can do in the future. Thank you all very much. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that the March 23rd, 2021 special meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned by roll call.
Motion is to adjourn. Would the clerk please call the roll? Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clay.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathroy.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
You have 15 A's and zero N's. That motion carries and this meeting is adjourned at 7:46 PM. And we'll be jumping right into our next meeting, folks. I'll give you two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. I'm going to call this meeting to order. The regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen will be called to order on Tuesday, March 23rd, 2021 at 7:48 PM via teleconference. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Susan Lovering and Alderman Schmidt will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As President of the Board of Aldermen, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the governor's emergency order number 12 pursuant to executive order 2020-4, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. To access soon, please refer to the agenda of the city's website for the meeting link. To join by phone, dial 1-929-205-6099. The meeting ID is 898-88514603. The passcode is 347707. The public may also view the meeting via channel 16. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting through public postings. Instructions have also been provided on the city of Nashville's website at nashuanh.gov and publicly noticed at City Hall and the National Public Library. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting via phone or channel 16, please call 603-821-2049 and they will help you connect. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taking during this meeting will be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to no law. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Alderman O'Brien.
I am present. I can hear the proceedings and I am alone.
Alderman Clay.
I am present. I can hear the proceedings and I am alone in this room.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I'm here. I'm alone and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Dow.
I'm present. I can hear the proceedings and I am alone.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, I am here. I can hear everyone and I am alone.
Alderman Clemmons.
I'm here. I can hear everyone and I'm by myself.
Alderman Lopez.
I'm present. I can hear everyone and I am alone.
Alderman Tanza.
I'm present. I can hear everyone and I'm alone.
Alderwoman Lou.
I'm here alone and I can hear you.
Alderman Jettie.
I'm here alone and I can hear the proceedings.
Alderman Schmidt.
I'm present. I'm alone and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Laws.
I'm here. I'm alone and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Cleaver.
Present alone and I can hear the proceedings.
Alderman Harriet Gathroy.
I'm present. I'm in this room alone and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Mulcher.
I am present. I am alone and I can hear everyone.
You have 15 in attendance. Thank you. Also joining us this evening is Mayor Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Mayor, did you wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, Madam President. Thank you very much. Well, first I wanted to, to extend my condolences and the city's condolences to the communities of Atlanta and the environments around Atlanta and Boulder, Colorado for the tragic events that have occurred over the last week or so. Both of those communities have suffered mass shootings. And I think, I know we all hope that they can come together and heal as quickly as possible, although certainly a big burden that will be. But we wish them, of course, our best. Madam President, I wanted to update you briefly on the pandemic and the city's efforts to eradicate it. Public health as always is working very, very hard. Uh, they are administering vaccines now in addition to doing weekly testing. We are working with the state under their supervision, but the public health through various clinics has administered over 4,000 doses of vaccines. As you know, we're running a clinic down in the tree streets at St. Louis once a week that will eventually transfer to the, to the temple over on Raymond Street. But last Friday, public health administered, and many volunteers as well. I mean, there, it's a big effort, administered 590 doses over there. So they're reaching the, uh, communities of color, underprivileged people who are more vulnerable to the vaccine, to the, to the virus and less, uh, able to get to a normal vaccination site. So that, uh, that is a great effort. But the number of cases, Madam President, is up, uh, something we need, it's a little bit troubling. Couple of weeks ago when we met, there were 80 some active cases in Nashville. Now it's 160. Uh, the positive, and those are identified cases, diagnosed cases. The positivity rate has also jumped up a bit from about 3% to about 5%. Now these numbers are still significantly below what we had, uh, in December and January, but I think they suggest that we need to continue to be cautious with all the taking the wearing of masks, the social distancing and avoiding large gatherings. So we need to continue to be cautious. I wanted to mention, Madam President, that the mayors of the city met again today. Uh, one thing that has come from the pandemic is we've begun to meet remotely, uh, which makes these meetings much easier and much, uh, they happen much more often, a lot less traveling. All the mayors in the city were actually there today, 13th, from Manchester to Berlin to Nashville to the seacoast. Um, all are very concerned about this downshifting. I mean, the people in Concord who are suggesting, some of them, not anyone here, but suggesting that this isn't happening or it's somebody's imagination or something, that is definitely not accurate. All communities are concerned both about the loss of the education funds that we're all seeing and the increase in the pension costs coming exactly at the wrong time. As we've discussed before, Nashville is seeing, getting a hit of $11.8 million from the state of New Hampshire. Uh, that's a, over a 5% tax increase for the hardworking taxpayers of Nashville. Our delegation is working hard to try to make up and gain some additional revenue, appropriate some additional revenue to offset some of this. But, uh, they've got tough sledding. So I congratulate them on their efforts and, you know, just hope for, for their success. One thing on the agenda, Madam President, that you will be voting on tonight are the two contracts for the paving plan of action that we have all supported over the last few years. Uh, one is for the residential streets. That will result in the paving of 15 and a half miles of streets. Uh, and the other contract is for the arterial streets. Those were bid separately. Arterial, arterial streets are the largest collector streets. Uh, that will pave seven and a half miles of, of those larger streets. Uh, this is on top of about 100 miles of streets that we have paved over the last few years. So I think, Madam President, we've made a very big, uh, impact in terms of improving the infrastructure of the, of the city. Uh, finally, I wanted, uh, to mention a couple of things we haven't discussed before. One is the American Rescue Plan, which was passed by Congress, uh, in recent days. Now this will ultimately bring, uh, $16.8 million is the scheduled amount to the city of Nashville coming over the course of two years, this year and next. Uh, we need to look carefully at how this money can be spent. The law is, uh, vague. The details will be spelled out in the treasury regulations that are issued hopefully soon. We don't know when, uh, but the, and we, and they will spell out the details. But the law specifically says that the money cannot be spent for tax relief, says they can't be used for pensions. The law suggests that they, the money could be used to offset revenue losses and the, and a very limited number of capital uses, uh, water, sewer or broadband, uh, projects. So we'll be watching for those regulations. Whenever they come out, we're talking to the other cities about, you know, how they are intending to use the, the money. And we will, of course, come back to you with the news as to the regulations as soon as that comes out and, uh, so we can try to decide how to best use the money. Finally, Madam President, another thing that we haven't, uh, really touched on before is that Brady Sullivan has been the owner of the former Indian Head Bank Building at 146 Main Street for quite some time now. And the building has been for sale, but has not sold. So they have made the decision based upon their submissions to the planning department. So they have made the decision based upon their submissions to the planning department to rehab that building for 17 apartments. They have submitted plans. It looks like the project is, you know, we don't know until construction actually starts, but it seems very promising that that will begin and will result in, as I said, 17 units of Main Street downtown housing. That will cause a building that has been, a very iconic building, one that's part of, you know, a symbol of Nashville, really, that caused it to be reoccupied and reused. So we're very much looking forward to that project and we're optimistic that it will go ahead in the near future. And unless there are questions, that's all I, that's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. Responses to the remarks of Mayor. Anyone? Alderman Dow.
Yes, Mayor, just have a question. When the 16 million comes down, especially the first part of it, does that go through the state? And if it does, do we anticipate a delay in the transfer, like a lot of federal funds from the state to the city? And is there any chance the state can put additional limitations on how the money can be spent?
No, fortunately, as your question implies, fortunately, it does not run through the state. It comes directly to the city. So we will certainly be, will need to comply with the restrictions that the money comes with, with the, comply with the regulations that are issued by Treasury, but beyond that, we won't have to satisfy anybody at the state level regarding how we decide to use the money.
Excellent.
Anyone else? Response to the remarks of the mayor. Alderman Lou.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Mr. Mayor, could you give us an update on something that I've seen on several social network sites regarding an additional arrest at City Hall?
I think you will have to talk to the police department about that. I was not directly involved and I didn't witness any of the events.
You want me to call the police department?
I think they have the most accurate information about it, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Response to the remarks of Mayor. Seeing none? Recognition period.
There is none.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I will declare the minutes of the Board of Alderman meeting. Regular and special meetings of March 9th and March 15th be accepted, placed on file and reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communications have been received from Donna Graham, Legislative Affairs Manager, regarding a communication received from the public and from President Lori Wiltshire, President of the Board of Alderman, regarding calling a special Board of Alderman meeting on April 6, 2021, relative to a public hearing on R. 21118, which was subsequently changed to Thursday, April 8, 2021 at 7:00 PM.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communications and place them on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. Is there anyone that wishes to address the board? Okay, seeing no one. Communications requiring final approval.
Communication from Mayor Jim Donches regarding the multi-year contract award concession rights for Stelo Stadium.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Thank you, Madam President. I motion to accept, place on file, and award the contract with Mark Dudley, DVA Dudley's concession for a two-year agreement for concessions at Stelo Stadium for 8% of each month's gross revenue by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez. Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 15 yeas and zero nays.
And that motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding the contract award in excess of $1 million for 2021 paving program of residential roadways.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to accept, place on file, and award the construction contract for the 2021 paving program, Residential Roadways to Sunshine Paving Corporation of Hudson, New Hampshire, in the amount of $4,585,195. Funding will be through Department 160 Admin Engineering Fund Bond Activity Paving, Department 161 Streets Fund Trust Account Classification, 81 Capital Improvements, Department 169 Waste Water Fund Bond Activity Sewer Rehab by Roll Call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez. Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou. Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 15 yeas and zero nays.
And that motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding contract award in excess of $1 million for the 2021 paving program, arterial and collective roadways.
Alderman Laws.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to accept, place on file, and award the construction contract for the 2021 paving program, arterial and collector roadways, the Sunshine Paving Corporation of Hudson, New Hampshire, in the amount of $4,191,750.50. Funding will be through Department 160 Admin Engineering Fund Bond Activity Paving, Department 161 Streets Fund Trust Account Classification, 81 Capital Improvements, Department 169 Waste Water Fund Bond Activity Sewer Rehab by Roll Call.
You've heard the motion. Discussion on that motion.
Yes, Alder, Madam Chairman.
Alderwoman Lou.
Thank you. Alderman Laws, this is for seven miles, is that right? The 4 million?
I can honestly answer that question because I don't remember the specifics. We went over this in, I believe, PEDC last week.
I wasn't there. Um, that's okay.
I apologize. Is there anybody else?
I could answer that if you wish.
Thank you, Mayor.
It's, this, the arterial streets, it's seven and a half miles.
Oh, okay.
The previous contract for the neighborhood streets is 15.
All right.
So a total, each was 15 and a half and seven and a half for a total of 23.
Any further discussion? Seeing none? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
No.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 14 yeas and one nay.
And that motion carries. Petitions.
Petition has been received for street renumbering, Sheet 61B, Lot 30, approval of which is pending, and Sheet 61B, Lot 29, a proposed two-lot subdivision by Berkshire Street.
There being no objection, I'll accept the petition as read, referred to the Committee on Infrastructure, and schedule a special Board of Alderman public hearing for Tuesday, April 27, 2021 at 7:00 PM via Zoom. Nominations, appointments, and elections.
Joint Convention with the Woodlawn Pinewood Cemeteries Board of Trustees.
There being no objection, I'll declare that the Board of Alderman meet in joint convention with the Woodlawn Pinewood Cemeteries Board of Trustees for the purpose of electing two trustees and I'll call for nominations.
Yes, President Wiltshire, the Board of Trustees of Woodlawn and Pinewood Cemeteries nominate Patricia Beddinger and Barbara Whitmore for five-year terms that will be ending in 2026.
There being no objection, I will close the nominations. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Barbara Whitmore and Patricia Beddinger.
Alderman Cle.
Barbara Whitmore and Patricia Beddinger.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Barbara Whitmore and Patricia Beddinger.
Alderman Dow.
Barbara Whitmore and Patricia Beddinger.
Alderman Karen.
Barbara Whitmore and Patricia Beddinger.
Alderman Clemmons.
Whitmore and Beddinger.
Alderman Lopez.
Patricia Beddinger and Barbara Whitmore.
Alderman Tanza.
Patricia Beddinger and Barbara Whitmore.
Alderwoman Lou.
Barbara Whitmore and Patricia Beddinger.
Alderman Jettie.
Barbara Whitmore and Patricia Beddinger.
Alderman Schmidt.
Patricia Beddinger and Barbara Whitmore.
Alderman Laws.
Patricia Beddinger and Barbara Whitmore.
Alderman Cleaver.
Patricia Beddinger and Whitmore.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Barbara Whitmore and Patricia Beddinger.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Barbara Whitmore and Patricia Beddinger.
Trustee Uponovich.
Trustee Beddinger.
Trustee Bozlovich.
Barbara Whitmore, Patricia Beddinger.
Trustee Columbia.
Trustee Farwell.
Trustee Frizzle.
Trustee Jensen.
Patricia Beddinger and Barbara Whitmore.
Trustee McLaughlin.
Trustee Whitmore.
Yes, Barbara Whitmore and Patricia Beddinger.
Trustee Whitney.
Mayor Donches.
Patricia Beddinger and Barbara Whitmore.
You have 19 for Barbara Whitmore and 19 for Patricia Beddinger.
And that motion carries. Barbara Whitmore and Patricia Beddinger are declared duly appointed to the Woodlawn Pinewood Cemeteries Board of Trustees with terms to expire March 31, 2026. Are Patricia Beddinger and Barbara Whitmore with us to take the oath of office this evening?
Yes.
Okay.
Barbara Whitmore.
Barbara Whitmore, okay. Corporation Counsel will do the oath of office for you.
Okay.
You're on mute, Steve. That's okay.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a trustee of the Woodlawn Pinewood Cemetery Board of Trustees according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, there being no objection, I will declare that the joint event convention now arrives.
Joint Convention with the Board of Library Trustees.
There being no objection, I will declare that the Board of Alderman meet in joint convention with the Board of Library Trustees for the purpose of electing a trustee and call for nominations.
Linda Laflambeau, I'm chairman of the board. And last year at this time, we were all in person and Dave Pincino, our illustrious secretary, nominated me for a new term. So I am returning the favor and nominating David Pincino for another term of seven years on the Library Board of Trustees and that term will end in 2028.
Thank you. There being no objection, I will declare the nominations closed. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
David Pincino.
Alderman Cle.
David Pincino.
Alderwoman Kelly.
David Pincino.
Alderman Dow.
David Pincino.
Alderman Karen.
David Pincino.
Alderman Clemmons.
Pincino.
Alderman Lopez.
David Pincino.
Alderman Tanza.
David Pincino.
Alderwoman Lou.
David Pincino.
Alderman Jettie.
David Pincino.
Alderman Schmidt.
David Pincino.
Alderman Laws.
David Pincino.
Alderman Cleaver.
David Pincino.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
David Pincino.
Alderman Wiltshire.
David Pincino.
Trustee Bergeron.
David Pincino.
Trustee Apizia.
David Pincino.
Trustee Jackwood.
Trustee Kane.
David Pincino.
Trustee Kuhnireddy.
Trustee Laflame.
David Pincino.
Trustee Pincino.
David Pincino.
Mayor Donches.
David Pincino.
You have 21 for trustee David Pincino.
And that motion carries. I will declare David Pincino duly appointed to the Board of Library Trustees for a term to expire March 31, 2028. The oath of office will be administered by Corporation Counsel.
David, raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will continue to faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a trustee of the Nashville Public Library according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help you God?
It's great pride, I do.
And it's with great honor that I congratulate you and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Pincino, for your service. Appreciate it. Okay, there being no objection, I will declare that the joint convention now arrives. Okay, there being no objection, I will declare that the joint convention now arise.
The following appointments by the mayor have been introduced for a first reading this evening to the Cable Television Advisory Board, Justin Chapman of fifty-five McKee Street, Nashua, and Cole Morgan of twenty Lake Street, Nashua, for terms to expire March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. Elizabeth Torino of eleven Berkeley Street, Nashua, to the Citizens Advisory Commission for a term to expire October first, twenty-twenty-three. Taylor Berry of thirty-three Wellman Avenue, Nashua, and Dante Castello of four Bicentennial Drive, Nashua, for terms to expire April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. Christopher Barrett of forty-four Abbott Street, Nashua. These are all to the Historic District Commission, Christopher Barrett of forty-four Abbott Street, Nashua, for a term to expire January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. Mary Ellen McKay of nine Webster Street, Nashua, and Robert Vorbach of fifty-eight Manchester Street, Nashua, for terms to expire December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, and William Slavinsky of forty-six Berkeley Street, Nashua, for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, and Nicholas Kanakis of one fifty-nine Main Street to the Zoning Board of Adjustment for a term to expire September eleventh, twenty-twenty-three. And Mayor Donches respectfully requests that these appointments be confirmed.
There being no objection, I'll accept the appointments by the mayor as read and refer them to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees, there being no objection, I will declare the report of the March eighth, twenty-twenty-one Human Affairs Committee to be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the March sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one Planning and Economic Development Committee to be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the March seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one Finance Committee to be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of Board of Aldermen's appointments.
There are none.
Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of Resolution R. twenty-one-one-nineteen relative to the acceptance and appropriation of twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars from the State of New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, Exotic Species Program, and authorizing the transfer of matching funds.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President, I motion for final passage of R. twenty-one dash one-one-nine by roll call, please.
You've heard the motion, is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Molshear.
Yes.
You have fifteen yays and zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution twenty-one-one-nineteen is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
There are none.
New business resolutions.
First reading of Resolution R. twenty-one-one-twenty-three relative to the transfer of twenty-five thousand dollars from Department one ninety-four Contingency Account seven zero one zero zero General Contingency to Department one oh-nine Civic and Community Activities Accounting Classification Fifty-six Outside Agencies for the purpose of providing funding to the National Association for the Elderly.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Dow, Alderman Clemens, Alderman Harriet Gathright, Alderman O'Brien, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Cle, Alderman Cleaver, and maybe Alderman Lopez. And myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of Resolution R. twenty-one-one-twenty-four approving a Fifth Amendment to Purchase and Sale Agreement of City Land at twenty-one Pine Street, map seventy-seven Lot seventeen, and land of Public Service Company of New Hampshire doing business as EverSource Energy at three Pine Street Extension, map seventy-seven Lot two.
Additional sponsors, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Harriet Gathright, Alderwoman Cle. Given its first reading, I will assign that to the Planning and Economic Development Committee, the National Planning Board, Mine Falls Advisory Park, and the Board of Public Works.
First reading of Resolution R. twenty-one-one-twenty-five, supporting nonpartisan fair redistricting.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Tenza, Alderman Harriet Gathright, Alderman Dow, Alderman Cle, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cleaver, Alderman Clemens, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Lopez, and myself.
Alderman Karen.
Alderman Karen.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. New business ordinances.
First reading of ordinance O. twenty-one-fifty-seven, providing for representation of the LGBTQ community on the Cultural Connections Committee.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Tenza, Alderman Harriet Gathright, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Dow, Alderman Cle, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cleaver, Alderman Lopez, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Clemens, and myself.
Alderman Laws.
Alderman Laws. Given its first reading, I'll assign that. Alderman Karen, okay, given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Period for general public comment, is there anyone that wishes to address the board this evening?
Yes, Lori Ordolano.
Okay, you have three minutes, name and address, please, for the record.
Sure, Lori Ordolano, forty-one Berkeley Street. I wanted to follow up and find out if the purchase and sales was signed or we've closed on the property of Burke Street, and that's gone and taken care of at this point. And I was wondering if the aldermen, I can't recall if you have control of the building project for DPW or DPW maintained control, but the quote on that project when we bonded it back in twenty-nineteen was, is almost two years old, and there's been a lot of changes in construction costs. And I'm wondering if the board, both your board and DPW, have made any movement to go back and re-cost that job because I'm not certain it's going to be a ten million dollar job anymore. And if we have to cut it by a couple million dollars or we have to add to it, I think it's worth a review in looking at what you're actually buying for the money. Also, I raised an issue back a while ago, maybe at a budget committee meeting, about having an update on the impact and the shift in the tax rate that potentially could be caused by this pandemic and a shift of assessment values from, with residential versus commercial properties. And I know there's a fair number of commercial abatements this year, some big, big numbers, and you would expect that. But I was wondering if there's any attempt to have Vision come in and talk to you, give us an idea of what they're seeing for vacancy rates and what that shift is going to be. I did an abatement for somebody up in Concord and helped them out, and they had a condo that was worth two sixty. The tax bill in twenty-nineteen was seventy-five hundred, and in twenty-twenty it was ten-four. And their growth rate in their condos was like fourteen percent, their houses were like eight, and residential was, I mean, commercial was down two. And I was stunned by the shift in the tax bill up in Concord. And I'm just, I'm just curious if we're going to be faced with the same thing. And also, I was wondering if you could give us a rundown on the opening of City Hall. What's delaying that, is it COVID or is it construction? And what's your estimated timeframe to get, like, building safety and the clerk's office open? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to give public comment? No one, okay. Remarks by members of the board. Alderwoman Cle.
Thank you again, Madam President. I'd like to take the opportunity to thank many of my community members in Ward Three. This Saturday, they got together and amazingly went and cleaned up the Shattuck Street Tot Lot and the Salem Street Community Gardens. We did about five to six bags of trash and dog poo in the Shattuck Street Tot Lot and twenty-five plus bags of leaves. And yes, normally Parks and Rec would be doing that, but the, the community there just didn't want to wait. I think they were probably jumped about a week ahead of what would have happened. The reason why we rushed to do it is there were two children on that Thursday who fell in poop, and that was the final straw. We, I have talked about this over and over again, people should not be bringing their dogs in. We did an ordinance to say that dogs do not belong in the Shattuck Street Tot Lot, and they still do. The group of people that got together spent about four hours, yeah, about four hours cleaning up that park. And it was filled with children that day and the next day. But that night, someone decided they were going to give us a what-for and hung a bag of dog poo from the, the equipment and tore up the sign that the community put up saying that this was cleaned by this. I know it's just one, two, three people, but it just broke my heart that somebody would do something like that. To me, that's vandalism. And as a result of us doing this, we have another project that we're going to do on April tenth. At ten-thirty, we're going to meet at Foster Square, so I'd love to see a lot of volunteers. And we're going to walk up and down Lock Street, and we're going to pick up trash and we're going to clean. And even if you can't pick up the trash, you can still do something like drive around and give bags and water to those that are doing that. We want to make French Hill to be the best it possibly can be, so we're going to go one street at a time. When we finish with that, we're going to hit Whitney, and then we're going to hit any of the other streets that we possibly can. And I have one more thing I'd like to talk about. And the, with the recent dismantling of the Kessler Farm Water Tower, it has kind of stirred up some water issues, and it's brought brown water. And as I make, as, as we were joking the other day, it seems like Ward Three is downhill from everybody. And as a result, we have a lot of brownish reddish water, and it's manganese. And it's, it's been happening now since January. And normally, I just tell everybody, run your water, call Penachuck. Personally, I wasn't calling Penachuck. Well, I called Penachuck yesterday because my tub was filled with water, my toilet was filled with water, and everything out of my sink was filled with this brown reddish water. They didn't know who I was, but they responded immediately. They came, they flushed out the, the hydrants, and now my water is crystal clear. So I'm asking anybody in the city, if you have these issues, give Penachuck the benefit of the doubt, call them. They will be responsive and they will take care of your issues. And it beats getting on social media and saying Nashville water is horrible and it's terrible because right now my water is crystal clear and it's going really well. So we, we have to help them out by letting them know we're having these issues. Thank you, Madam President.
Anyone else?
Alderman Lopez.
Yep, first, for those who are, okay, the half of downtown, which has been asking me, the outdoor dining, I talked to Director Cummings, he said that it was due to be put out to twenty-sixth. There was a little bit of a delay and that there's work being done on it by artists. So it hasn't disappeared, we still plan on doing it, it just has, it's coming a little bit slower than planned. Additionally, I wanted to comment on the legislation that was proposed this evening regarding the Cultural Connections Committee. Prior to being alderman, I was the chair of the Cultural Connections Committee and oversaw the changing of its name from ethnic awareness to a name that we thought better fit what its role was and what its goals were. And so I'm very pleased to see a proposal for representation on behalf of the LGBTQ community. It's long overdue, it was what we intended when we were looking at what the committee's purpose was and how cultures interact. I think it'll, it'll do a lot for the, for the Nashville community. Although I will also just kind of add, we were also hoping that deaf culture might find its way in there. So just drawing that, drawing that in your direction, Mayor, thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Dow.
Yes, just in keeping with the Penachuck flow. Yes, by the way, the tank is empty and is being disassembled up here at Kessler Farm as we speak. There's no water coming out of the tank. The piping a year ago that they connected back to the tank over at the Penachuck property is now servicing this entire area. I have no idea what caused the brown water in Ward Three, but it is downhill from Ward Two. The other thing is that we've had numerous phone calls to the Police Department, to the School Department, to lots of other, several aldermen. The, the tree cutting at the, over by the Penachuck Middle School is not on school property. That's the solar farm being built by the Penachuck on Penachuck land, and they have completely tree cut because they're putting in solar panels. So there'll be a lot of work in there, we have not started the work on the Penachuck Middle School yet, that will begin any day now, so. But we will not be doing that level of tree cutting.
Okay, anyone else? Alderman Clemens.
Thank you, Madam President, I just wanted to say that I had, although I worked probably from, geez, eight to almost, almost twelve hours on St. Patrick's Day, I had the unfortunate pleasure of doing that. I was able to, to go out a little bit with my wife, and we got a dinner and a drink at Flight Center. And I wanted to just report that from what we saw, it was very well organized. It was probably the tamest St. Patrick's Day I've seen in Nashua, and people were definitely following the rules. And I actually ran into one of the Health Department folks, and no fines that day. You know, so we do it right here in Nashua, we've been doing it right all along. Our restaurants are safe, they're a good place to go and gather, and I can't wait for the, the barriers to come out as, as what Alderman Lopez was saying, I, I think they're going to come out, they're going to be great, they're going to be decorated this year, some of them. And as we can all tell, we're ready for spring, it was beautiful today, I had shorts on, took a walk, I'm ready for summer. So anyway, thank you all and have a good evening.
Anyone else?
Yes, Madam Chairman?
Yes, Alderman Lou.
Thank you. What I'd like to just comment on is I, I have spoken with the City Hall in the recent months and been told that the City Hall is opened for appointments only. And I've asked about, my concern is that most many businesses and, and schools, et cetera, are open with masks, et cetera. But I was, I was comforted that everything is open by appointment, and I'm sorry that there have been arrests. But I need to, I had a need at City Hall and I contacted them, and I was told that you know, a property file is not typically available during COVID times. And it's troubling. I was told that, you know, when, eventually I was told that there's a, there's a, a general policy at City Hall not to set up same-day appointments. And I don't understand why that would be a policy because City Hall is, is there, you know, if, if they have a process for allowing appointments, why would appointments not be available same day? I understand if, you know, if they're full, but it just, you know... I understand if, you know, if they're full, but it just, you know, I think I would really appreciate it if we could start to pay some attention to, to this matter, let's just say. I'm beginning to wonder, when I ask my mayor about an arrest and he suggests I, I talk to the police, is there, could we as a board perhaps find a way that we can answer questions? Not just listen to someone's concerns, but part of my problem is that I have spoken with several people in town who, whose representatives don't respond to them. And I know that they can vote for someone new next time, but that's an issue. I mean, if, if you're not getting your representative to, to answer your calls or to, to be willing to, to engage with you, then there's got to be a better way. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Alderman Clea.
Thank you, Madam President. I was remiss when I, when I spoke and I talked about that the neighborhood had come out to help. We were also joined by Alderman Lopez, who joined us that day. So he crossed over the border and, and came to help us pick up poo. And I truly appreciate it and thank you very much, Alderman Lopez.
Did you want to add something to that, Alderman Lopez?
Oh, first of all, that yes, we did perfect the chocolate shovel project in Ward Four. But second, with regards to some of the comments that were previously said, I personally try to answer every comment, every question raised of me, whether or not I agree with the person's motives or not. So I, I am unaware of any conversation, any requests that I have not answered. But with regards to the questions that are being addressed to the board, some of them are really basic. When you're talking about police intervention, the police are the ones who have the police reports, not the mayor who wasn't there. So as an Alderman, I don't think that's my responsibility to try to answer that question. That's what the police are for, that's what the Board of Police Commissioners oversee, not us. We do legislation, we do budgets.
Anyone else? I would just like.
Madam President, may I say something?
Attorney Bolton.
I'm a department head in this city. And I just heard someone say there was a general policy in City Hall not to make same-day appointments. I don't know about other departments. That is not my policy. Now, we are very busy, sometimes we can't fit people in. But if someone calls and the opportunity is there to meet with them later in the day, I make myself available. So when someone says that generally speaking, no one can get an appointment on the same day anywhere in City Hall, I don't think that person knows what they're talking about. And the fact is, I just don't think it is good policy for this board to denigrate all the hardworking people that work in City Hall without going around and really finding out what's going on. And no one has asked me any questions about this. No one. So there are people that I am reluctant to schedule appointments for. People who commit crimes, people who are uncivil, people who are disrespectful to the building itself, banging on doors, trying to break locks and get behind locked doors, people who jerk doors out of the hands of people who are trying to tell them they must schedule an appointment. Yeah, there are some difficulties occasionally with some people. But there are hundreds of people that work in that building. Most of them have worked right on through this pandemic. I would feel much better if members of this board would appreciate those people who work for this city every day, doing the very best they can, at some risk to themselves, to try and provide for this city. The fact is, over the last year, there were more motor vehicle transactions done than during the same time period the year before. I believe the same is true in the City Clerk's Department. We had more people registered to vote than in any previous year. So this suggestion that City Hall is closed and no one is doing any work is just untrue. And it's really disheartening to all of these employees to hear members of this board denigrate the hard work they do. I'm sorry for being so blunt about it, but that's just the truth. Thank you.
You're welcome. I would like.
Madam Chairman, I have a follow-up, please.
Alderwoman Lou.
Thank you. I do have my facts straight. I haven't denigrated anyone.
But you have.
I'm not, would you like to explain what you're telling me, Ms. Chairman? I have denigrated someone?
Yes, the hardworking employees of this city. Every chance you get, you denigrate the workers in this city and it's uncalled for, Alderman Lou, uncalled for, it's unprofessional and I won't tolerate it on this board any longer.
All right, if I could just follow up?
You sure can.
This afternoon, my husband and I tried to get a look at our property file. My husband was told by a young lady at City Hall that we try not to make same-day appointments. That is what I said, I think. And I'm not denigrating anyone, I'm speaking, I, I'm telling you something I heard. I'm telling you something that as, as a customer, I was told. Now, if anyone wants to apologize to me, I would appreciate it. Ms. Clea, I'm sorry, why would you not apologize to me? This is not something that I'm making up. I am, okay. This is why this isn't working. Thank you.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I also wanted to respond as well and, and I do want to say that for the record that I appreciate all the employees who work in City Hall. And your, your job has been much harder these last, you know, the last year with COVID nineteen and everything. And, you know, I appreciate you coming into work every day and doing the things that you do despite the fact that you don't have the ability to do it the way that you normally were used to. You know, change is hard and certainly there are certain people as well that make things even harder. And for the record, I, I just want to say as well that for myself, when any serious person in this city contacts me, I always get back to them.
Alderman Clea.
Thank you, Madam President, for letting me have a third bite at this apple. I'm sorry, but I found the comments reprehensible and I too, like, like I believe all the board members here, maybe with a few exceptions, truly feel, you know, that our, our city employees have gone above and beyond with COVID, they, they've done everything that they possibly can. City Hall, we are spending thousands of dollars to make each area to be COVID safe so that we can open fully. They've, they've moved from one place to another to another. And I don't say that, that young woman did not say that. If she did, then she was misstating something because I am sure that if there's an opening, they're given an appointment. And the comment about the, as Alderman Clemmons brought out about Alderman not responding, that I was finding denigrating to the fellow board members. I think we all respond. Maybe we don't respond within an hour or maybe even within twenty-four hours, but we respond. I know I spend hours and hours speaking to my constituents, not just listening, answering questions, doing the work that needs to get done way above what is probably expected of me. I mean, even my comments about the dog poo and the brown water, I, I put myself out there and I know so many other Aldermen and Alderwomen do the same thing. And yes, I am very upset with it. And if anybody deserves an apology, I think it's us. So thank you very much.
Can I say my comments now? Thank you. I was at a police commission meeting last night where a, a young officer named Ryan Fitzpatrick was provided an award by the police department for a case. I think there was some, it was a local case and they were able, able to get the guy's phone and they traced this child abuse back to the Dominican where someone actually went in arrest, got, got an arrest in the Dominican for this seventeen-year-old that was providing child sexual images of a nine-year-old. So this case was like, I mean, even a senior police officer detective might not in their career have gotten a case like this and solved it. And, and he was truly deserving of the award he got last night and I just wanted to let the public know that. We have a great police department out there, they're doing good things in our city and they're catching the bad guys. So thank you for that. Committee announcements. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. Tomorrow night, Wednesday, three twenty-four, the Committee of Infrastructure will meet at seven PM. No appointment necessary, come one and come all. One topic, if you need just that one more piece of enticement to be there, will be the Broad Street Parkway and it seems to be narrow on concern, so please come and listen to it, your input would probably be helpful. Thank you.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, Thursday night, the Joint Special School Building Committee is meeting. We will be addressing the, the work orders for the second-most majority of work so we can get started on that project. And as I said, the project's going very well, Fairgrounds is ahead of schedule and under budget at the moment and it will be completed like in the summer only because there are areas that we won't be able to touch with students in the school. So at the joint special meeting, we will be presenting pictures of the interior of the school. On the outside of the school, by the way, the plastic will be coming down any day now, you'll see the new, the new facade, if you will, of the front of the school. And by the opening of school next year, it will be pretty much a whole new school. Thank you.
Other committee announcements? Seeing none, Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make the motion that the March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned by roll call.
The motion is to adjourn. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou. Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have fourteen yeses and zero nays.
That motion carries and we are adjourned at eight fifty-five PM. Thank you, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Night, everyone.
You're wonderful people.